We are live.
Okay, then I'd like to call to order the work session. Maplewood City Council Work Session for Tuesday, April 20th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, form is present.
Okay. Item number three is review of the parks and stormwater and capital improvement funds for fiscal year 2122. So let's start with the parks and stormwater budget. And.
Give a couple of highlights and then we can ask some questions if that's okay. The we'll notice under in the 2801 account, there is no payment in there for the pool bonds. So Karen put a little note in there. The last payment will be June 2021, which we talked about last year, but it's obviously a highlight. It's a good thing. We finally got the pool paid off, or we will in another month or so.
We've actually already sent that payment.
Oh, good. So we're ahead of the schedule. Karen's ahead of the schedule. So the pool is paid off, which is really good news. Elsewhere in this 2800 account, you'll notice there's a couple vacant slots. We are having a very difficult time even getting applications. It's I've never seen anything like it. I've heard different reasons, economy, people doing a lot of work in their homes, unemployment benefits being a little more generous now. And honestly, a lot of the people we attract to maintenance positions are people that are handy, but maybe not like a maybe like a union level carpenter, right? Or somebody that's an actual certified electrician. So right now, if anyone's trying to get any work done in their home, whether it be painting or adding something simple like trim or a little more complex like finishing the basement, I think most people that they've talked to others will find out it's very difficult to get people because everyone is doing something to their home. I believe that's a large reason we're having issues. So we've actually expanded our outreach. Karen, Laura Miller is really working on that. Even ask people on the Parks and Recreation if they know of anybody that's of interest. We're going to be reaching back out to the high school and seeing if they have any young people. We've always tried to allow, we've wanted people with a little bit more experience possibly, but we're again, I just want people to realize we are down three employees. I believe the last time we talked, we advertised in February, we had two people that were not qualified really at all. And we advertised again March 15th and didn't have anybody as of about 10 days ago, but we've been reaching out to different people saying, do you know anybody that would be interested in this position? And we've got a few applications, but again, we're down three people, just so everyone's aware. If you remember, we looked at the historical figures. I'm down about six or seven from 2011 in the maintenance division. So that's just something to keep in mind. It's not, it's not, we're not doing anything different than we have in the past. We're just not getting applicants. Historically, we would get anywhere from eight to 18 or 20. And we usually had at least two or three every time we advertised that could easily do the job. And that's not necessarily the case now. We've actually got a former employee who was an exceptional employee who went back to school. And we're going to bring this individual back. Probably he's going to start in about another two or three weeks and he's going to work through the end of August, which is good because it does two things. It gives us a qualified person that is an excellent employee. And hopefully, some of these home improvements and maybe the employment cycle may have shifted a little bit in four months from now on, we have additional qualified applicants. So we are working on it. I just wanted everyone to be aware of that. And then we'll get to the pool at 2803. We really didn't do anything last year in the pool. We didn't make any improvements because of all the restrictions and all the changes. So we all, we basically moved any improvements we were going to make last year over into this year's. Obviously, the people have seen, if anyone's gone by or looked at any of the social media, some of the splash pad is, is right now, it's actually on schedule. So if you would have asked me a couple of months ago, do I think it'd be open in time for the pool opening? I would just say no, just in general, these things take a while. These projects always run over for whatever reason, but it looks like we're going to be okay there. The native planting display at the pool complex will probably, if they say we should plant it in the fall, that's when we're going to do it. That would be what I would assume they're going to tell us. But if they say, hey, native plants are differently, can plant in the spring or early summer, that's fine, but that'll also be another phase. So those will be the only changes you'll see there differently. Karen and I were talking with everyone on, the park board wants to do a citywide comprehensive needs assessment. And so we put that under 280260400, which is professional services. You know, that spiked quite a bit, but basically the estimate was around 50,000. I don't have a number. That number could be higher or lower, but Patty DeForest on the park board is a the director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Clayton, and that was her suggested number. Again, it could be a little higher, it could be a little lower. We realized that's pretty substantial price. We do have the money in this account and the park board felt strongly about this. And I couldn't disagree with them at all. I think it's not, I think it's a good idea because it's been so long. In the past, anytime we've done a grant, there were some questions as it caused problems for grants. It has not, because we've always obtained a grant to get individual Parkmaster plans or park plans. Anytime we knew we were going to apply for a grant, we had done that preceding our application for a grant. So we haven't lost anything on this, but I think, I think their overall goal is just to get a better overall, more comprehensive approach. And again, I can't argue with that. I just want to make sure the plan, whatever we do, doesn't sit on the shelf.
Yeah, sorry, just to like clarify, because you've mentioned a needs assessment. And then this also sounds like maybe it's some sort of like longer term strategic plan. Is it kind of a combination of both, like a survey of our current? Okay. Perfect.
Well, and so like our parks over the years, almost nearly every large feature you see out there has been obtained through a grant. I mean, I can't say all because the most recent would be the tennis court, you know? That was an example where it was showing where and we were, we had replaced some cracks and we were starting to look for some grant possibilities, but then it just started to alligator crack and really was becoming a major detriment. And we had the money in the account, I mean, but and we also had other grant opportunities we needed. So it was kind of like we either apply for a splash pad or we pay cash for a splash pad or we pay cash for the tennis court. We just had so many large projects that we ended up paying cash for that. But most any other pavilion you see, irrigation, things of that nature. For the most part, we get grants whenever we can and they are readily available, which is always a good thing in park systems. One thing we wanted to get, and it's been something that staff has talked about for probably three years is eventually replacing the playground at Kellogg Park with a like an ADA compliant playground. And the thought process from staff's perspective was it's near a lot of public transit, specifically the MetroLink. I know it's not real close, but it's close enough to where we believe it'll be more of a regional draw for people with children with disabilities. And again, that's, that's kind of been more of a staff discussion internally. But we actually talked about that openly at the, at the park meeting recently. And so then there was also thoughts about some children that are autistic, which I, I'd be honest with you, I hadn't thought about. One of the park board members said there was somebody that was very large, very heavy, but the person had a learning disability. So the swing set was still something that was interesting to this individual. And, you know, so these are the types of things that we haven't really focused on when we're, when we're coming up with playgrounds. You know, we basically buy playground equipment for children, but we're going to try to look at expanding our scope and we hope that this study can maybe, because honestly, it was something I hadn't thought of. And so we're hoping they can bring in different ideas. Just to make sure we, you know, we try to be as inclusive as possible across all of our playgrounds. I mean, over the years, I think we've done a good job at adding amenities. Most recently, the skate park, splash pads, another one. And we've got a lot of parks for a city as small as we are. We have 11 parks for a city that's a mile and a half square. It's an excellent, excellent options for our residents, but we just want to make sure we're not missing something. And it has been so long since we've done a citywide plan that I think it'll be good. And it'll also help the council in the future, you know? And you guys may go through this and, you know, direct staff to, hey, make, make the ADA a priority on your next grant. We're fine with that. We're totally fine with that. I did tell some of the newer members, because the park board has had some turnover over the years, that we maxed out on the, on the grant for the splash pad. We got 370,000. And so we probably won't go out for another large grant for at least another year or two. And that's just because it's, 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 if you get one, one year, you're not going to get it the next year because they try to spread that, those resources around, which is a good thing. But I, I would envision summer of 2022, possibly replacing that Kellogg Park swing set with some sort of an ADA accessible playground. We're also, and I'll ask anyone here, sometimes people get, you know, emails somewhat related. If you see anything that says playground grant, please forward it to me, myself and Tiffany now look at it. Because maybe with the ADA grant, we could get something aside from the typical St. Louis County Parks grant we get.
I have a question about that, if I could. I know at one time, the community block grant at Kellogg Park, we were trying to get, you know, money for playground equipment at that time. And they said that we couldn't use the grant money because it was in a blood plane. Is that going to affect other types of grants? I know we were told that when it was a no.
It should not, Kellogg Park right now, well, it could affect Deer Creek Park and Kellogg Park. Those would be the two. And that was more of a recent change within the block grant program.
Right, right.
And that's another source of revenue. I mentioned to some of the park board members, you know, we're actually doing improvements to Greenwood Park's playground equipment this year from a block grant that we applied for approximately three years ago. That the process is so many years behind. I know it gets somewhat confusing, but that are, those are some of the improvements we have coming this year through that. If the council's aware, the block grant, we've really tried to hit specific income eligible activities. For example, the utility assistance, the rental assistance and the home improvement. So I have not, we haven't done anything on parks in the last two years. So that would be the soonest we could do anything park related would be 2024 probably, but we'd actually see the improvements. But to answer your question, Karen, it would just be Deer Creek Park and Kellogg Park.
Right.
And right now, I think the only one that would be income eligible there would be Kellogg anyway. I just tried to get a little snapshot of some of the highlights there. Does anyone, I don't know if it makes sense just to start off to see if anyone has any questions or on any of the, any particular item? Or Karen, Karen Delber, am I missing any highlights, I guess is a good way to put it?
Sorry, I was muted. One of the things I do want to point out is, and let me find the account before I point it out to you, our park expenses, I budgeted a little higher this year because last year, okay, let me explain how this works, just so that we're all on the same page. Typically, in a given year, the Heights has a management company that hires our lifeguards for us. And our, the revenues from pool passes and daily admission and everything like that usually covers the expense. That line item includes our joint agreement that we pay, the 290,000 that we pay every year. But last year, due to COVID, there were insufficient revenues to cover the management company expense. And we had to pay the money to the city of Richmond Heights for, for the cost of the lifeguards that we had, even though we were openly open a little bit, limited amount of time and whatever. So this year, I increased the budget line item just in case. I know that, you know, things are starting to open back up and we're going to start doing things a little differently, but I did want to point that out to you, just in case there was a question as to why it went up. The contracted amount hasn't changed. It's just that last year we incurred the expense, so this year I'm budgeting for it in case we do.
Matt, is that line item 60415?
Yes, sorry.
That was the one. Okay.
I do want to, I do want to add something to that, though. There was a minimum wage law put in several years ago. And so our cost for lifeguards every year is gone up pretty significantly because of the standard. So we're going to, we're going to have to reevaluate our, our park agreement and kind of go through that. I do believe the cost of running the pool, again, because of labor costs is, is going to continue to go up a little bit every year. So I don't believe that the the, sorry, I'm trying to think of the admissions cost, the season pass is basically the revenues that we do get from the pool will, will cover our overall operating costs. And we talked about it last year, that the pool, we lose money every year on that pool. And it's, it's just one of those things where that's why you have a sales tax to allow recreation opportunities in town. We believe that the pool may not go back to where it was in 2019, but we believe it's going to get very, very close because pool capacity is based on overall deck square footage. We have massive deck to where even if it's at 50%, we can still bring in something like six or 700 people, which is a very, very, very busy day for us. And we believe those numbers will only get better as far as their capacity. So the only thing that's up in the air right now is pool concessions and where we're going. But I believe they'll even be able to have deck chairs, lounge chairs back out on the deck. So it, pool operations should be pretty close to pre-pandemic operations. And so we're definitely looking forward to that.
And do we anticipate any of the swim teams renting the space again this year?
We hope so. I think I remember I mentioned that in a city manager report at a council meeting. We made more money than we've, than we've ever made on that pool from, for September through October. We've reached out to some of these programs and let them know, hey, if the space is available, I'd rather have that pool busy 12 hours a day if possible. I mean, we've got to still run the pumps. We've still got to pay for the chemicals and everything else. And they like the idea of the, basically the Olympic sized pool, you know? Some of these smaller, you have to some of the Brentwood Y, for example, you're constantly doing turns where this pool, you can really stretch out. And these people, when I say these people, I mean these swimmers, they, they, they don't care if it's in the, you know, 40 degrees outside, they still would rather swim in this pool, which to me is crazy. But they expend so much energy that they don't really get cold. They actually like the colder water better. So I'm hoping so. I didn't budget it, though, just because we don't have any contracts with them.
I saw that there's going to be some improvements to Deer Creek restrooms. Is that just improving them as is? Or is there going to be any sort of like gender neutral type bathroom installed there or just?
We were just basically replacing the, replacing all the existing equipment within those. So they're in pretty bad shape. So we're just basically going through, we weren't going to add any new bathrooms.
All you're putting water bottle fillers at all the parks, which is nice.
Yeah, I can't remember what park board member brought that up. And honestly, our bottle filler at City Hall gets more use than the actual fountain itself, the standard fountain. So we will just do those anytime we do a new water fountain anywhere, unless it's like a quick one, maybe. Because obviously you have to run electric and things like that out there, water pressure. So wherever it's practical, we're going to do that for any water fountain. So you still may have some traditional ones and that's just an issue of, you know, where are you going to hook the, the the unit itself and power and things of that nature. But I think it's silly to put a regular water fountain in if you have the means to put in a moment of a bottle filler. So we'll start doing that from now on. You'll also notice the Ryan Hummer, there was a lot of vandalism. The roof was in bad shape, though. Anyway, we're going to check, see if we can get a check our insurance possibilities there because we had a significant amount of vandalism there. But I don't believe it's going to be eligible. We'll look and just in case, we have wanted to make sure we got that repaired. That's another large item expense. And then trying, obviously throughout there, you also notice picnic tables. We're basically, any chance we can get to go back to the aluminum maintenance free. It's also better for risk injuries when you're trying to lug some of those large picnic tables. Those are extremely heavy and it's just easier to have the aluminum ones. We've been slowly replacing those over the years, probably the past five years. Although than that, there's not a whole lot aside from the Ryan Hummer roof replacement and the Deer Creek Park improvements, and then the other items we talked to you about. Does anyone else have any?
It looks like, it looked like Barry was asking a question, but I think he's muted.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barry.
On salaries 2802, the, the number that we have in for maintenance superintendent, is that is that the number that you're advertising for? Because John was there quite a while.
No, we had John in when we did this and we just kept that John is actually now retired, but now it'll probably go a little less, will definitely go less. We're probably going to probably promote from within at that position. Right now I have two people basically co-acting, one doing external, because we've got a lot of improvements still going on at City Hall. That number will go down.
I actually had a question there, too. Is, I see it's 40% of, it says, is that 40% of insurance and pension, too? Or is?
Yeah, 40% total.
Okay, for each thing. Okay.
Yeah. You'll notice some are, and I guess they're all 40. Yeah, it, we believe that the actual number is probably closer to half, even a little higher. And we previously, we had a park board member ask us how we derive that number. And what we've done is we've monitored it for a year. Probably two or three years ago, we've monitored all of our staff time. And that's where we, we had, we're very comfortable saying 40%. We've also, you'll notice with vehicles, we've, what I believe is more appropriate, we've split those because with 11 parks in town, our vehicles, you know, it's not just streets. You know, it's not just maintenance of streets or just maintenance of parks. We don't, we don't designate our vehicles in that way. Basically, any vehicle we get is basically going to be doing all those activities. So that's just the simplest way to budget it. And I believe it's more appropriate for the actual use of the vehicles we, we are purchasing. Are we okay to move on to the basic capital improvements account? Okay. Biggest items we have on here, the biggest changes we've made. We talked about it at our last meeting. If you go into the capital improvement fund, line item 240070305. I want to make sure everyone sees that we added $60,000 in there for sewer lateral expenses. The idea behind that, keep in mind, this is obviously a major change, but it's kind of a realization that we're never going to have enough money, at least in the, in the short term, to really appropriately address our sewer laterals. It's a lot more expensive to contract out. I'd rather hire more people and do it internally, but it's difficult to get people. So we're we're trying to balance that as best as we can and knock that down. But this extra shot we are in, this extra $60,000 a year is a significant source of revenue that will really help us out because there have been cases where we run out of money in that account and we basically cease doing any sewer laterals for month, two months at a time. It's usually not longer than two months, but we won't fall further behind by doing that, by having this money allocated in that account. Streets, we did the resolution probably two weeks ago on that. Everyone's aware of that. The railroad improvements, I believe that, that may even be carried over one more year just because of dealing with the railroad and it's always a slow process. We still have not been alerted formally that we're going to lose the grandfather status of that quiet zone, but I know it's coming. I've been working with the contractor or consultant that specializes with the railroads. And we're just now waiting to hear back from them on what specific gates we need to purchase and then we'll eventually bid that. But I have, I wish I could give you a timeline, but I would just be, it would be just a complete guess as to when we would get that. But I'm hoping this coming, upcoming fiscal year, we'll have those gates and alleviate anyone's concerns that the quiet zone would go away because that would be a major problem for any of our residential structures in town that are along those railroad tracks. Karen, anything else in here that you think is? Oh, we know we had those problems with the HVAC units and we had to do a special basically a special, I couldn't do it via emergency because of the cost. So we put that in there just in case one of our HVAC units goes out. I don't have to go back to the council to ask beforehand. I could just go ahead and get moving on replacing this. I just wanted to have that in there. We have two more right now that I anticipate are near the end of a useful life based on the fact that we've had to replace six others. And so this is anticipating that. Hopefully I won't have to use it, but I believe I will. Shore in equipment is new, that's for sewer laterals. And then our, our pond pit, we typically do a motor replacement, but we actually believe our entire pit is cracked because our water is going down dramatically and fast. And I don't want to make any improvements until the ducks have their babies. So I'm kind of particular about the ducks, just so you know. We leave the grass and the weeds grow a little higher there. You can ask Karen, people, people think I'm kind of crazy with this stuff, but they're.
He tap on the window until he feeds them.
They do. It's really cute. They really, it's funny. I mean, they wait to see, the minute they see my light kick on, they come over to my window and just start packing away. Pretty cute. So I might have some money in there next year for duck blinds, right Karen? Well, special duck house, so. Officially lost it.
Make it like a mini City Hall, like they have their own out there.
It could say City Hall, too. That'd be great. I'm not kidding. They are really, they're really cute. They really are.
On the IT support services and maintenance, is that including the new server?
No, the new server's sitting in Marty's office right now, ready to be installed. And we have not had email, external email all day today. And that's the one that's getting replaced. It's just a pain. And just to give everyone an update, I've got the phone system in here as well. That could be this current fiscal year because we have that in there as well. The phone system and the IT services are two major projects that Marty Corcoran is working on. And he's making a lot of progress on both of those. So it's very possible we won't use that next fiscal year. Hopefully it'll be this fiscal year, but just in case it's not, I wanted to make sure we carried that over.
That's the same phone service I had in my office that I got rid of probably 12 years ago.
Yeah, it's in bad shape.
Yeah. For that same line item, I don't know, when I added those numbers together, it was a lot lower. So I didn't know if something.
For that same line item, I don't know, when I added those numbers together, it was a lot lower, so I didn't know if something was saying or it just got the wrong number. In six oh four four oh. Unless I did bad math, which is possible.
Uh, sixty thousand and one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four is sixty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four.
Well, um, I'm in six oh four four oh, it says it's one thirty.
I'm sorry.
Two fifty-seven, but I think I got like one oh six, six, three, or can't read my own writing.
We'll make sure to check on that to make sure we got the right math there. Maybe a case where we just didn't carry something over. We'll make a note of that. Thanks for pointing that out.
Um, Anthony, the uh Manchester Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, um, et cetera. When are we actually starting on the next phase of Manchester, and when is that going to be budgeted for?
We're we're hoping coming up, which could be a change, but we believe the actual construction from. There's going to be two phases. The first would be the the that the that MoDOT owns, which would be Hanley Road. To to essentially Martini or Big Bend, and that should be this summer. And we're not paying for that, but once that happens, then we will take over that portion of the road from MoDOT. This is a prior agreement that we probably approved, I had to guess eighteen months ago. Um, second phase would be the city's.
Uh-oh, new crows.
Yeah.
Too possible to squeeze it in this year. If we do, I would have it as enough. Can you still hear me? I'm showing my internet connection is unstable.
Yeah, we didn't hear some of what you said.
Okay, I'm sorry. It just, it just. So what I'm hoping is is it would be twenty, I'm hoping we could possibly change amend this and, you know, as a change within the next couple of weeks. We're issue, we're having questions over um. Construction easements. Um, and we're we're waiting to hear back from MoDOT, where it's possible it could be this summer, Sandy. From Big Ben to the city limits, but I don't believe it's probable. That that would be twenty twenty-two. So Manchester Road by. You know, August of twenty twenty-two should be looking good all the way through, but in front of City Hall, that that'll get a repaving this summer.
Mm-hmm. Um, just as as much as we all want the improvements to happen, I also don't necessarily want. Manchester shut down um in front of our businesses, just as they're getting ready to reopen, so. Um, I'm sure you guys are already sort of taking that into consideration.
We are, and honestly, um. That I still think it's twenty twenty-two regardless, but uh it we we're doing an asphalt overlay. So it won't be shut down. If uh there'll be isolated slab repairs, and we believe there's quite a few isolated slab repairs. But we basically have two lanes plus a turn lane, so we can essentially redirect traffic through there. And I don't anticipate many slab repairs within the parking areas, but you may lose a a few parking spaces while we're waiting for the concrete to set. We'll use the quick set concrete. Um, so it'll be, it'll be a bit of a nuisance, but it's not going to be a shutdown by any stretch. Um, and that's one of the benefits of obviously doing the asphalt overlay. This will probably be the last asphalt overlay, so probably. Fifteen years from now, we will have to completely reconstruct Manchester Road, and that will be a massive project where businesses will probably be closed. Uh, you know, you're looking at, you know, a two-month project as opposed to. You know, when they mill that road, you can drive on it, and then they'll just go ahead and lay it the same day. You can drive on it the same day, so. It'll be an inconvenience. It won't, it won't be a major burden, though, I guess is a good way to put it. Intersection improvements might be a little more time consuming, but we're making those more pedestrian friendly. If you remember, we're also going to add that mid-block crossing. So it'll be, it'll be nice when it's done, and then we're going to come back in later and try to. We'll refocus our efforts on on planting trees that will survive and coming up with. Um, tree grates that will not kill the trees like our prior ones did from many years ago, so. If I had to guess, September of twenty twenty-two, Manchester's going to have a completely nice new new look to it. Be safer for pedestrians as well.
Is there any way that we can um do anything about getting more? Uh, outdoor dining space for the restaurants while we're restructuring the street?
Um, the plans have basically been in already, so we can't make changes, but we did include those. We included a bump out. Near Sutton would be the south. I guess I'll, what what's the uh Boardwalk Waffles right there? So there'll be a bump out there, and the idea would be assuming. They allow us to move, uh, By State and MoDOT allows us to move the bus stop there in front of Jimmy John's. A little bit further west, then we could pick up some outdoor seating there, because then we could base, where you have a no parking zone anyway. Instead of having that stripe, we're just going to do a bump out there, which would give some seating there for whether it be Boardwalk Waffles. Jimmy John's uh in the post may even want to take advantage of it. We'd basically probably keep it public seating. Because there's multiple users right there. We didn't want just Boardwalk Waffles to monopolize it, say, for example. Um, and then at the mid-block crossing. Um, if anyone wants to know where it is, there's a fire hydrant right in front of Boogaloo, and Crow's Nest is there. And work right now, that's obviously a fire lane, so the same principle holds true. Instead of just painting that, we're going to actually do a bump out. Right there, which will also help with the pedestrian crossing, but that would be. A fantastic place for Boogaloo and Crow's Nest, which are two existing restaurants to have outdoor seating there as well.
Okay, great.
And there'll be an island there also uh for uh safety. Uh, have have. You been in contact with uh Brentwood regarding traffic rerouting while they do? You know, their work on the uh the flood mitigation?
I have not, but I will make a note to call their public works director tomorrow and see if there's any impacts.
Well, you know, people are going to be going north and south on Hanley. I'm assuming they'll come through uh Maplewood on Manchester, go north and south on Hanley, then I have no idea where they're going to go after that. Uh, and that that's not necessarily our problem, but I didn't know how much work is going to be, is going to affect that intersection. Besides the bridge uh, the bridge work that they're proposing.
That's going to be, yeah, that will be challenging right there, but. I don't think it's going to have too many impacts, at least. East of Big Ben, that maybe, you know, from Hanley to 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 Big Ben, we could have some more potential problems, but. Um. Not not as concerned about the business district area, if if at all possible, from what from what I've heard, all the improvements that are going to be there. But I'll I'll double check with the the public works director just to make sure I'm not missing something.
Hanley Road should be open north and south while they're doing that work. Everything's west of Hanley.
Yeah, that's where the bridge, yeah, and everything, everything east of Hanley should should not be impacted either. That's why I think, like I said, a lot of people. I think the majority of the traffic would be further down Hanley and Marshall Road and all that. I mean, I think that's going to be a. A problem, because people are going to have to. Somehow get from Hanley to Brentwood.
There's going to be major backups, though, on Manchester, you know, heading west, uh, because everyone's going to have to turn.
I think it's Strassner Road. Don't, please don't quote me on that, but basically going through Brentwood Industrial Park. I mean, I think you're getting a lot of people going through that area. I think. I think that's where your predominant concerns are going to be.
Do you know when they're supposed to start that?
I haven't seen the latest number, so I, but I can find out, and I can shoot out a, I'll mention it in my next um. I'll throw it in my next uh city manager report. I'll just shoot an email.
Yeah, we're definitely going to want to know that with for when we do our traffic study.
Yeah.
I'll find out and make sure that everyone knows. Does anyone else have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Or Karen, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Well, if that's the case, then uh. Uh, that would conclude our review, which means it would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then work session is now adjourned.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. We'll see you all, see you all on Tuesday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.